I would like to start off by having the reading of the Open Public Meeting Law.
Ladies and gentlemen, those requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location listed in the Herald News and the Bergen Record, adopted, posted in the county clerk, posted in administration building, mailed to two newspapers in the coins for the provisions of the law.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Acter, Duffy.
Here.
James.
Here.
Lepore.
Here.
Lizara.
Here.
Vice Chairman Best.
Here.
Chairman Ponti.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September 25th, 2018 meeting.
I'll second that.
You made the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Duffy, seconded by Commissioner James. That's like the way a Commissioner sounds? Any questions? Hearing no roll call, please.
Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lepore. Lizara.
Here, yes.
Vice Chairman Best.
Stand. I changed my vote to yes. Thank you.
Public portion.
At this time, I entertain a motion to enter into public portion. Moved by Commissioner James. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Lizara.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Best.
Yes. Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please approach the podium.
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Oh, wait, we do have someone. Just want to remind members from the public that you have three minutes, and anything you say is a part of public record. We ask that you give your name and address, as well as sign in the sign in sheet. That's at the podium. And this is for the housing meeting. This is for housing. If you have anything regarding housing.
It could be housing.
We'll have a public portion for our regular freeholder meeting, which is going to start right after this.
It could be housing anyway.
Okay, well, you have three minutes.
Mr. Anderson, please, 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 for the Department of Jersey, have come here with some people who have adult disabilities, and basically, we are concerned about lack of services for adults with disabilities in Passaic County. One of the things is the housing. We don't see any more housing being started for adults with disabilities who have aged out of the schools. Most of the group homes and other constructions are being done in other counties, specifically Bergen. They have, we know they're way up in Bergen, coming up with some new buildings, but we don't see a lot of that done in Passaic County. So that's something that you may want to include, housing for people with disabilities, specifically people with developmental disabilities, because they're not just along the waitlist, and nothing's been done in Passaic County specifically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, seconded by Commissioner Lepore. Move to public portion. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
James, Lepore, Lizara.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Best.
Yes. This time, I entertain a motion to approve resolutions on the consented agenda, H-1803, H-1804, and H-1805. Moved by Commissioner Lepore, seconded by Commissioner James. Any questions? Hearing no questions. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
James, Lepore, Lizara.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Best.
Yes. Thank you. Anything else that anyone would like to add? Any reports?
Yes.
Okay. Motion moved by Commissioner James, seconded by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Lizara.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Best.
Yes, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
20th, 2018 conference agenda here at the Passaic County Board of Freeholders. Can I have a roll call?
Freeholders Acter, Bartlet.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Lepore.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lizara.
Here.
And our Administrator's here for his report.
Hello. My Administrator's report will be a presentation of reaccreditation certificates to the Passaic County Sheriff's Office from the New Jersey State Police Association, the Chiefs Association, to Richard Burnick from Harry Delgado, Director of the Accreditation. Sheriff, welcome. Congratulations.
We have all the members of our department, please come forward.
Take a picture for us? Yeah, it'll take you long.
Freeholders?
Yes. This is actually my second visit here. We had three years ago, a big license, the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Burnick, and he's staffed for achieving accreditation. Back then, it was certainly a privilege. They belonged to an elite group of own-fund agencies in the state of New Jersey, but what they achieved now is even better. It puts them in a more elite, if you will, group of own-fund agencies in the state of New Jersey, because only about 20% of the eligible agencies in the state of New Jersey, the founder of 60, have actually made it through to be accredited. If you indulge me for two minutes, I'd like to share with you the significance of the achievement. So accreditation is a process which here is a culture in the Passaic County Sheriff's Office. The foundation of accreditation lies in the adoption of standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. In the state of New Jersey, there's 105 standards, many of which require multiple proofs of compliance. So accreditation is a progressive and time-proven way of helping law enforcement agencies calculate and improve their overall performances. It is a certification by an independent authority, in this case, the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, that the accredited agency was carefully measured against an established set of state and national standards, and has met, in the case of Passaic Sheriff's Office, exceeded many of the state and national standards. And I'll say that because at the end of these rigorous processes, which in this case lasts three years for them to receive accreditation, we have what we call the fiscal onsite final assessment visit, and we look for everything. I mentioned to you that you need multiple proofs of compliance for the 105 standards, and we typically find something. In the case of the Passaic County Sheriff's Office, we didn't find anything. So in a traditional sense, they would have received an A+. And that is truly remarkable, because there's usually issues that we find at the site that we resolve right then and there, but in this case, that wasn't necessary. So what makes this agency so different is the fact that they perform many functions that are not traditionally associated with a sheriff's department, such as uniform patrol, mobile field communication, bomb squad, crisis response, et cetera, et cetera. So to that end, the Sheriff's Office completely, this time around, rebuilt and equipped their PSAP, or PSDP, the Communication Center, that is, and currently in progress as an auxiliary communication center. The Passaic Sheriff's Office, in the direction of Sheriff Richard Burnick, is an extremely professional organization. The sheriff has achieved reaccreditation, demonstrating his commitment to maintaining his accredited status, that he's following and adhering to best practices, state and national. So it is indeed my pleasure, for the second time, and I hope to be back in three years, Sheriff, the New Jersey State, representing the New Jersey State Association or Chiefs of Police and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission, to congratulate Sheriff Richard H. Burnick, the accreditation manager, who's become a good friend of mine, Director John Lizara, the staff of the Passaic County Sheriff's Office, the freeholders, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for achieving accreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies in the state that have made this important commitment to excellence in policing. So to all, Sheriff, congratulations.
Thank you.
So I'd like to just thank you again for, I know the process is in depth, and again, of course, you and everyone that was involved. We thank you for that. But I have to say that, again, to the Administrator and the freeholders, that really, the credit goes to, first of all, John Lizara, Director, who initiated the program three years ago. I thank you for the hard work that you've done. I thank my executive staff and each and every one here. We are a team, and it's these officers here among those that are working and not here that make this happen. So again, to each and every one of you, I thank you for the hard work that you do and for making this a reality for us, and again, keeping us number one. Thank you all. Administrator, freeholders, and I thank you for your support in the Sheriff's Department, because without your support, we would not be able to do what we do: make promotions, get the money we need, and of course, get the things that we need as well. So we thank you.
Take a big group picture.
Yes, yes.
Stand up here. It makes Pat look a lot smaller. You gotta turn it to Frank. Help me.
Who will go on with the conference agenda? Except that I need to change my calendar. We are now reviewing the agenda came on K-76. Do you have any lead starters or candidates?
I guess we demand a rest of the year. We have a one late start and one amended resolution. My office request amendment. K-77, I'm redidding tonight. That was the one for Cary Corporation, the installation of air handles, that came out of Public Works. We would ask for additional care of the boiler at the Road Department, President Hamer. So we would ask that that resolution be amended to allow the repair for $9,510 to the boiler at the Road Department, which is K-77. We also have one late starter that was also approved in Public Works, which came in late. It's the resolution authorizing winter service and maintenance of three term sprayers used by the Cary Park Department. And that would be number K-87.
Okay. Any reason to go to executive session?
No, Madam Director, there is none.
Can I have a motion to overturn the conference agenda? James?
Freeholder. Freeholder Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lizara.
Yes.
Okay, we have a 10-minute break. Start the regular agenda at 6 o'clock.
Back to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice, adopting a pre-organization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in administration building, mailed to two newspapers and coins for the provisions of the law.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Freeholders Acter.
Here.
Bartlet.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Lepore.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lizara.
You can stand, please.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love. Be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freeholders in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please do, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
We have a moment of silence. Do you remember, all the men and women who have died will serve in the United States armed forces. Have a motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd, 2018.
Go ahead.
Duffy and Lepore.
Freeholders Acter.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lizara.
Freeholder reports.
Yes.
Anybody have one?
I just want to thank you, Director. I just want to thank Kenny, the roads crew, all of our staff, who did an absolutely amazing job during that storm. I don't care what people are saying. There was accidents everywhere. The first storm is usually a different story. People forget how to drive, but I saw our roads crews out there way before the storm started. We were salting, they were brining, they were positioning themselves. I don't think anybody could have recognized the intensity of that storm. Certainly, the other people didn't get it right. But once cars started backing up, I mean, everybody got out at the same time. There were accidents, delayed things. There was tractor trailers, there were jack night. Cars just weren't moving. You can't plow when you can't get through to a road because of the cars who were jammed by it. But all told, between you guys, the Sheriff's Department, everybody who was out there during this emergency, I give you kudos. I think you did it. Under the circumstances, I think you did a remarkable job, and I thank you all for having real wisdom, and residence of Passaic County. Thank you.
I'd just like to mention that, obviously, we all know the elections are over now, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your support during this election cycle. And today, we swing our county clerk. I saw many of you here. We're proud to have Danielle Iron-Irmhoff on board with us, and we'll work closely with her to make sure that this county runs as smoothly as it is now. But I do thank you. And I'd like to thank the department heads who were at the nonprofit summit this year. We had a record number of people for the second year. You guys did a great job. We got a lot of information out there, and we're looking forward to next year's nonprofit summit. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the voters of Passaic County. Been privileged to represent you for the last six years. Looking forward to three more. I'm grateful for your support on November 6th, for myself and for our entire ticket. And as the Director said, that bright future that we're all working on began after the Clerk's Office today. Danielle Iron-Irmhoff is your county clerk as of around 12:30 this afternoon, and great things are ahead, even more so for Passaic County. But thank you to all the voters, thank you to all the volunteers, and everybody that was involved in so many different ways in this year's campaign. I always enjoy campaign season. I also enjoy when campaign season is over. But I enjoy getting out there and talking about what we do. And apropos that, I just want to mention one piece of news out of NJTPA, where I represent Passaic County. To report to my colleagues, the county's been awarded $3 million through a regional transportation alternatives grant for Phase 4 of the Morris Canal Greenway. Phase 4 encompasses one of the last unimproved sections of the Greenway in Passaic County. It's one of the most scenic. This $3 million is going to enable us to complete the Morris Canal Greenway Trail from where currently, where the trail improvements currently end, at Wilmore Avenue and Main Street in Little Falls, all the way to the entrance of the Ponton Aquatic Park, along the Ponton Plains Cross Road and Wayne. This is going to create eight new miles of off-road trails and be part of what is ultimately a 103-mile greenbelt from Jersey City all the way to the Delaware Gap. We've been working hard on this over many years. We've gotten previous grants, but this new funding will essentially complete the Passaic County section of the Greenway over the next year or two, and the rest is, there are counties around us to finish the route. There's some good news for today.
I'd also want to thank everybody who supported me during the campaign. Having run two years in a row, much like John, I'm relieved that the campaign is over.
Did you wait?
Apparently, apparently. But having run with most of this board now, I'm very grateful that the campaign is over. But, you know, I do want to say that, you know, the reason we do all this stuff, I often hear from people, they don't want to be, they don't want to hear about politics. We go door-to-door, sometimes people say, "Don't bother me with politics." And really, all of that is really just noise in terms of what politics is. Politics is just a means by which we decide our democracy, and the people who will be able to make the decisions. I'm grateful to be able, to be one of the freeholders along with my colleagues here to make the decisions for Passaic County. We take that responsibility very seriously. And finally, I just want to congratulate our electorate, which came out in record numbers in Passaic County and around the country. I'm incredibly proud of the fact that this is one of those times where we could say it wasn't low turnout, it wasn't apathetic, that there was, you know, regardless which side you're on, that there was actually some real feeling behind it and some real excitement about it, and hopefully, we can live up to those expectations of good government. And I also want to congratulate Danielle Iron-Irmhoff. I'm lucky enough to run with her, to know her. I think she's doing a great job as clerk, and I just happen to know her husband, and he's a good guy, too. And we're very proud of him and her, and very excited for her leadership.
Anyone else?
Director, we have our 41 resolutions on the agenda this evening for the freeholders to vote on, representing the work of the distribution of files.
Thank you.
Just like to congratulate my colleagues over there on Great Wayne and Danielle as well. I'm sure Lou, you got to get out here early, leave early at night to make sure dinner's on the table and the clothes are folded. So I'd like to wish everyone, and certainly Public Works and the Sheriff's Department, what Kenny did in that snowstorm. I was stuck on Green Lake Turnpike for about two and a half hours there. It was Passaic County trucks passing by, passing by. It was a mess up there, but they did a great job, as usual. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, of course, and all the best. Thank you. Pleasure to be here with all of you. And that's about all you're gonna get.
If I could, Madam Director, and I want to thank Kenny and his staff for the job that they did. You know, every snowstorm always presents a different challenge, and this certainly was challenging. But I also want to thank many of the municipalities that we came together, and so often, you know, governments just tend to point the finger, and that's not us, and, you know, that's the county, or the county says, "Well, no, that's the municipality's problem." But we had many municipalities that kind of stepped in, saw that we were struggling on our roads. Wayne Township, for one, came out and helped us plow some of the roads. I think it was Little Falls or Pumpkin Lakes, maybe both, that, I think it was Little Falls, that we borrowed some of their salt so that our trucks didn't have to go back to our salt domes, because, you know, plowed trucks face the same traffic that commuters face. So it really was, you know, a pleasure, and it gives me pride when governments work together to solve problems rather than point fingers. So I not only want to thank Kenny and his crew, but I want to thank the municipalities that helped out as well to get through what was a difficult storm throughout the state. You know, not just here at Passaic County, but throughout the state, up and down, and it was a challenge. But we met today with Kenny and his supervisors, as we typically do after storms like this, to talk about what went right, what went wrong, how we can improve. We're always looking for ways to get better, and we came up with a few ideas today. And, you know, every storm, we hope to get a little bit better. But Kenny, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kenny. You're Brock. Okay. Communications?
None.
None?
No.
Have a motion to open up the public portion of the meeting?
Ooh.
EJ, and who is this talking?
Best.
Okay, if anyone would like-
Freeholders Acter.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lizara.
Yes. If anyone would like to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name, address. You have three minutes. And don't forget to sign that sheet.
Hi, my name is Kevin Lindahl, 40 Congress Street, Bloomfield, New Jersey. I'd like to talk about relationships and a push for an independent prosecutor. Relationships are important, and you know, being in politics, whether it's the federal level, the county or the local level, some pieces of legislation, some funding measures, can live or die based on trust and working with colleagues that you've worked with before, built partnerships and friendships with. And some of the, it works the other way. Pieces of legislation can die if you don't have that working relationship or partnership with somebody. And we've seen in this country prosecutors who are charging police officers, when that police officer's in the defense chair, the prosecutor is, during their day job, gathering evidence, working with police departments, forming partnerships and relationships, which is all part of what they're supposed to do. But when it comes time to charge an officer with a vitality or an assault, all too often, that prosecutor has worked with the very department where he's charging the officer from, gathering evidence, building friendships and partnerships and relationships with those departments. And it causes an unconscious bias. This is not something that's conscious. A prosecutor's not going in there saying, "I'm going to take it easy on this guy," or not bring evidence to bear. But what we've seen happen is, the full spectrum of evidence is not brought to bear in the same way when a police officer's in the defense chair, when the prosecutor going after that officer has worked with that local department in cases against civilians. And so unconsciously, that bias, if you look at the conviction rates for officers that have shot unarmed civilians, it's very low. And we all know what that's doing to our country right now. It's tearing our country apart politically. We've seen the protests in the streets, we've seen the marches, and none of this is, I don't believe any of this is being done on purpose. I don't believe the prosecutor's walking in there saying, you know, he's going in there, there's four pieces of evidence, and he's emphasizing one or two, but not the full spectrum. 95% of the way we think is unconscious. And so my push would be for an independent prosecutor in the cases where a police officer's in the defense chair, the same deference to the fact that the officer's in the heat of the moment, has to make a split-second decision. All that wording would stay the same. The prosecutor would still be guided by that same, the same deference to the officer doing the job as they are now. the same deference to the officer doing the job as they are now. The only difference is that prosecutor would be independent, wouldn't be working with the same police department that he'd be with the officers from in his day job. That prosecutor would be unbiased, looking at the evidence, not having a formal partnership with the detectives and the police when that officer's in the defense chair. And if that evidence doesn't rise to the level of an indictment or conviction in a civilian case, it shouldn't with the officer. But that officer should not be working with the very police departments that he's going after the cop with. And I think it would bring it to a march towards justice neutrality. Let's have these cases stand on the evidence, and I hope I can come back and talk some more about a push for an independent prosecutor in Passaic County in the cases where the officer's sitting in the defense chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard, come on up.
My name is Arantia Vera, 63 Weaver Street, Little Pole, New Jersey, and I'm Carlos Munoz. He's disabled, he's 33 years old. The reason that I'm here with Mr. Carlos is that he got a green card, he's a United States citizen, he got the green card to Packer. His mother's here with us tonight. She came to me and told me that she wanted her son to be working because he has social security. Because he's disabled, although I've been close to him, he can find a job even to support himself. Since he's a citizen, he can collect social security. For that reason, we just wanted to ask, do you know any agency who can employ people with disabilities to be able to work? Or I can refer Mr. Munoz and his mother, what agency they can go to.
When you're done, we'll answer. When everybody's done. When the whole thing is over, we answer.
Oh, okay. All right.
Close the public portion.
This is Emma Harrison, 233 East Main Street in Prospect Park, New Jersey. This is a follow-up on last month's meeting about services in our county for our adults with disabilities. At that time, looks like there was a misunderstanding, because I said children, and I meant children because they are our children. But we're not talking about little kids that go to school and they receive about $100,000 a year for services from their Board of Educations. We're talking about children that are our children but are 21 years and over, and that's the population that we are representing today. The model that we take is for Bergen County. Bergen County started in 1978 with the Board of Chosen Freeholders. In 1978 was the first such office, Office of Disability Services in New Jersey, to address and serve the needs of persons with disabilities. The vision assists Bergen County residents with disabilities to achieve their full potential, to receive full involvement and our inclusion in all aspects of everyday living, and to promote community-based living options. That's from Bergen County. And then Union County, Union County Board of Chosen Freeholders has established the State's Office for People with Special Needs, which will promote inclusion, conduct outreach, and provide recreational, educational, and social opportunities for residents living with special needs, okay? The Freeholder Chairman, Sergio Hernandez, announced the office in 2018, okay? And they do little stuff, like a fall fishing derby, some kind of events, and also partner with community centers, schools, colleges, YMCA, businesses, support organizations, and volunteer groups to present recreation programs at county facilities as well as locations in various municipalities, okay? The programs are for little kids from five years old to adults. So basically, if Union County and Bergen County can do it, and we have the documents, if anybody cares to read them, they are on the internet as well, what we are asking from Passaic County Freeholders is to allocate money. You already have the facilities, but to allocate money for services for our adults with disabilities. Right now, there's about 13,000 Passaic County residents that are in special needs programs in school. All services start at age 21. Services after that are very, very limited or non-existent, especially in this county. We have some people here from what used to be the Catholic Charities. They closed three years ago, and there has not been any substitution for that program. And also, right now, I see that, there was a grant award, that was on item 84, grant award, $30,000 to Catholic Families and Community Services Project, that's going to be reallocated for a traffic light. So I would like more information on that. So now, I think that we are clear that we are talking about people post-21, not children. They are our children, but that doesn't mean that they are little kids. They have a lot of things going on already. Thank you.
A little bit nervous, I never did this in public. So, I'm sorry. Oof. Okay. My name is Victor. I'm, well, used to be a member of Respi Care for the Recreation Program here in Action. And also, I was a part of the, I'm in the Catholic Families and Community Services for Youth and Adults with Special Needs. Well, I did this letter from the help of two other clients who were maybe giving me ideas and writing this paper, which I have it in English and in Spanish. So, I'm a client there for 10 years now, now I'm already 29. But, I mean, it was a program for adults and adults with different disabilities who have special needs. Well, right now, I have Down syndrome, my Down syndrome, and other health issues, but really, this program now, I started when I was 18. From childhood, it was like a family to me, because to this day, this lady who's right there, whose name is Soraya, who has been a friend, daughter, mother, teacher, and spiritual teacher, and now a teacher for helping adults like me for 25 years, working. And also, the director or the superintendent was working at the program was Rosita Kardashian. And she has been helping us through the program all these years. Well, because of the situation, we didn't have no funds to stay in the program. They also divided us into two groups, and also they sent each of us into two different programs. I'm going to give you ideas of what we did. It's mine, three seconds of...
I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks. We performed for a Spanish show called...
Delano?
Yeah, Delano.
Delano.
Yeah. We also did a free, say, performance for the Father English here in Addison, New Jersey, too. But it was basically basic notes on piano. And we also did ticos for the homeless. And also, we used to cook, well, very independently, with supervision, of course. But also, we also gave supplies for families and for the families, like groceries and other needs. So, and that's really it. If you want this, I can give it in English, just to let you know what we basically did there. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
See, no one else closing? Sure? We'll close the public portion.
Anyone else that wants to come up?
Want to come up? Stand up and call for somebody. And? We want to close the public portion.
Duffy and Best.
Freeholders out there. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lusarre.
Yes. I think Freeholder James would like to respond.
Yeah, we're a woman. Ma'am, when you're looking for training or a job...
Oh, excuse me.
All right, so the One Stop Career Center is on 200 Memorial Drive. That's also the State Employment Center. They have a woman who works for the Department of Disabilities in that office, and they have all sorts of programs for people, whether it's retraining or other things. So I would strolling suggest you get ahold of, well, the director of the One Stop is Lauren Murphy, and again, it's 200 Memorial Drive, it's part of the college, so it's right across the street from Panther Academy. Right around the corner. And so stop over, talk to Lauren Murphy, she'll direct it to the right person at the, you know, the employment services, and maybe they can put together a program for him that will lead to his employment.
The Department of Rehabilitation and Rehabilitation Services, I know it's NADVRS, zone that's at the state level.
Call it that, she understands.
Okay. What is it?
Madam Director?
Yes, sir.
Great. If you would like, you can meet with my aide, Boris Adell, over there. He'll get you some direct information from the state program, along with some other numbers that you can contact with the state as well for other programs. So just meet with that guy, he'll talk to you right after the meeting. Okay, thank you.
And Francine Vince could not be here this evening, but she did send me an email this afternoon saying, and I missed the last meeting, but there was Iris Rivera, I believe it was. Is that Iris? Yes, Iris, so you have a meeting with her on Monday?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So just know we are reaching out, we are trying to help. I don't want you to think that we're not. We really, truly are trying to help.
Can I add one more thing, just so you know? Francine is relatively new. She is very good at what she does. She's now our Director of Human Services. We are the Human Services Committee for the Freeholder Board, we're taking a look at every single program we have, because we don't necessarily create programs. Funding comes in specific for specific things, like housing or things like that. It all goes out to what's called a request proposal. So we're taking a look at every program we have that comes out of our Human Services Department, and there's other resources throughout the county that aren't ours to give out. We're taking a look at that with what's provided by, you know, vendors that are out there now. We're reexamining how effective they are, if they're meeting needs, if there's needs that aren't being met. So with permission of Director Lusarre, who's not on the committee, but she's going to be firmly involved in this, we're taking a look at all of that. You know, it's quite a bit of money that comes through here, it's a pass-through from the federal government or the state government through the county, but we're responsible for, you know, getting those programs out and getting the funding for the money that comes in. So we're taking a look at it, and I can assure you, we're looking at everything that comes in. There's so much need in so many places in this county that it's very difficult to match everything. You know, money is tight, and quite frankly, the people in Washington don't seem to care in this one party. They've made massive cuts to things that are necessary, like Medicare and Medicaid. Medicaid cuts have been dramatic in health, and, you know, the last governor closed the North Jersey Training Center, and that took me personally, because I know a young person, a young man anymore, but he'd been there his whole life, he was just two years old. And they tried to transition him to a group home before, and it was not successful, so he was back there and having to get healthy, and I have no idea where he is now. I mean, some people did not survive that closure. So the state has to step up, step it up. That was the worst decision they ever made, to close that training center. It made an enormous difference in his life than those that live here. So that's what we're up against. It's not easy, as you know. I will recommend, again, once again, Beth Mora Leos is part of our Workforce Investment Board. Talk to Beth Mora Leos, because she has some wonderful things with her own son, and I will ask for permission to get our cell number to you, all right? But she sits on our Workforce Investment Board, and she is a champion, she heads the Disabilities Committee, and that is all about training. She's a good resource and a very good person, and I think it's something you should talk also.
Ready to move on? You have a motion to amend? K-77.
Can I do that and add K-87 at the same time?
Do that. That's our motion.
So we should talk for it?
We got to add that here. Why don't K-80? I want to announce that. That'll be K-80, go ahead.
So we're going to add from the floor to the consent agenda, propose resolution K-88, which I'm going to ask Deborah Hoffman tomorrow, Office of Economic Development, to come explain. In a nutshell, the request is to close the Straight Street Bridge on December 7th, a day which hopefully will not live in infamy in Passaic County, when we close the Straight Street Bridge for CBS drama elementary film here through the Passaic County Film Commission. Deborah, kudos on your work getting more and more shows to film here in Passaic County. Anytime you close a bridge, it requires a resolution of the Freeholder Board, and that's what we're asking. So I guess I sort of explained it, but I'd say if my colleagues have any questions, or if there's anything you think I can explain, I'll try to...
Thank you so much, Freeholder. We are coordinating with the Engineering Department, of course, and also with Roads Department, because there'll be an extra fee, not only our film permit fee from the county, but there'll be a road closing fee as well. They've already submitted a tentative, a draft plan, so they'll divert the traffic, and they'll have variable message boards. They hired a formal, a real company who does this, who can help direct traffic. I just was reading my emails now, and they're asking if we could close a little earlier, because they have 12 hours of filming. So it's like 5:00 PM to 7:00 AM in the morning, and so they have quite a lot to do.
Is that during the week, then?
It's December 7th, I think that it's...
That's a Friday.
Right.
Sure.
Right. And they are going to divert traffic, etc., so...
So Friday, any plans?
Yes.
Rush hour is a little rough.
A lot of bridges down there, though.
I wanna make it clear that I am, yes, appointing this person to take that, without mentioning his name, to-
Next, I have a motion to the certification.
Freeholders out there? Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lozare?
Yes.
All right, let me go back.
Does it change the outcome of the vote? Doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
Resolution twenty-two, I don't think it's a good idea. This person should never be in a position of power. I wanna make it clear that I am, yes, appointing this person to take that, without mentioning his name, to-
Next, I have a motion to the certification.
Freeholders out there? Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lozare?
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.